Welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor Council meeting for the town of Berlin. It is Monday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please join us in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They needed all the help they could get. Talking about Kansas City and their wonderful performance last night, all the Kansas City fans out there, sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Jack, are you happy?
It wasn't Kansas City.
That's... All right. With that being said, we'll take the approval of the minutes within the, we'll call that our consent agenda. Motion approved. Thank you. I've got a motion by Councilmember Nerr.
Are you doing A, B, and C?
Yep, A, B, C.
Okay, then I recuse for A.
Okay.
Second for B and C.
So I have a motion by, I have a motion by Councilmember Nerr, a second by Councilmember Nichols for A, B, and C. All opposed? All, all in favor? Wow, man. Sleep deprivation is all. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Any abstentions?
I abstained on number eight, letter A.
The motion included all three.
Okay. Then I abstain from all of them.
So then, the motion to approve the consent agenda, A, B, C, passed due na, or four to zero, well, no, four, one.
What's the motion?
Four, zero.
Can we get a restart? Can we get a restart?
Four, four, zero opposed, one abstention.
Thank you, Mary. As summarized by the town administration, with all councilmembers present. Let's try to generate item two. Proclamation. Proclamation, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one, celebrating February as Black History Month. I promise, we can just chalk the beginning of the meeting up to a speed bump. All right. Town of Berlin, proclamation, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two, celebrating Black History Month. Whereas National Black History Month is celebrated every February in recognition of achievements of Black Americans throughout the United States. Whereas the town of Berlin celebrates the rich history, culture, and contributions of Black Americans who have shaped our community. Whereas the National, two thousand and twenty-five, Black History Month theme is African-Americans of late and labor. Whereas with a focus, thank you. Whereas with a focus on various and profound ways that work for all kinds intersects with the collective experiences of Black people. Whereas the town of Berlin has been indelibly shaped and influenced by its own Black American community. Whereas we can all celebrate the immeasurable contributions of Black Americans in honor of their national, state, and local legacies and achievements. Whereas we must also reckon with centuries of injustice and confront those injustices that still fester today. Whereas we live in a country that was founded on the idea that all are created equally. Let the town of Berlin continue to come together to celebrate this Black History Month, to preserve and understand our history and embody the idea of freedom, equal treatment, and equal opportunity for all. Now, therefore be a result of the Mayor Council of the town of Berlin to hereby proclaim the month of February, two thousand and twenty-five, as our municipalities observance of Black History Month. And then witness my hand and seal of this day, the tenth day of February. All right. Thank you. We got off to a good start. All right. Agenda item three, presentations. Do we have the Burdell family with us?
I spoke with Ms. Burdell this afternoon, and I know that she is coming from a far distance, so maybe if she arrives later, we could just adjust the agenda, if that's possible.
That's perfect. The one thing I do want to thank Laura for, you'll notice on our agendas that we have added the strategic plan, driving strategies, and action steps. So those are on our agendas, and we'll try our best to do that for all items moving forward. So thank you, Laura.
Laura, you keep us on point with that one. I was like, good job.
All right. Up next is agenda item four A, and this is an item for approval. Keep in mind, all items for approval do allow for public comment before their action by the Mayor Council. So item four A is motion, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero eight, the proposed changes of the disc golf course layout at Stevenson Park. Eastbound Disc Golf is going to run. So gentlemen, just come forward, introduce yourselves, and tell us a little bit about the proposal.
Sean Johnson, President of Eastbound.
Thank you.
Taylor Hubbard, the Project Manager for Eastbound.
Thank you.
Go ahead, gentlemen, take it off.
So through feedback received from disc golfers as well as parkgoers, and then there's a disc golf app that people use to go through the course and keep score. We take comments through electronically through that. We've decided to try to come forward with a plan to make the disc golf course both more advantageous to disc golfers challenge-wise, but also way safer for general disc golf goers. And those kind of commented on in the last session. The general idea behind the reorganization of the layout is focused on the crossing of pedestrian walking paths. Right now, the course has a few that pride a little too close, and where the disc lands being a danger to people walking on the path. We've never had an issue that I'm aware of that's been fed back to us, but we thought it would be a good place for it now to come forward to you with a plan to make it still a safer event for the community. So this layout here, I don't know if you're all able to see it.
Yeah.
Sorry, back one more slide. There we go. Trying to hit on exactly what we were trying to do, where the old layout crossed the paths, and where the new layout will now kind of shift us around where the only time you're crossing a path is really where you're throwing the frisbee instead of where the frisbee is landing, right? You have the most control when you're throwing the frisbee versus, you know, hundred, two hundred feet away where it's landing, where someone could be kind of walking around the corner and be concealed. So this, this new layout proposal does get rid of a lot of blind shots and a lot of blind kind of walking paths. You can have full view of the path the entire time. Outside of that, we tried to make it as logistically simple as possible. We're not taking out all nine baskets in the air and moving to different spots. We're only actually moving three of the current baskets into new positions and rearranging kind of where the tee pads where we're throwing are on the course. It follows a general layout of the old course with just some few modifications because we were lucky enough to walk over the course last Friday as well. Outside of that, if approved, I wanted to make sure you're aware of when we'd be doing that, because we already had to drill an auger three feet to move the, you know, pull a basket out and put it in the new position. No concrete is involved, and just moving a basket in the concrete into a bucket, the home depot bucket, make it such a permanent fixture in the park. Next slide, please. So I wanted to see on the left-hand side, you can see the kind of current layout. This is the way UDisc shows it, which is the disc golf app versus what our proposed new layout is. First thing I really want to hit on is hole number one is moving away from the fence. I actually worked with that gentleman's son-in-law, so I've heard stories about trying to get away from potential disc golfers into his yard. He was happy to hear that we were trying to move it. So moving one way, we split, I don't want to go through all of them. I can.
Just hit your changes if you don't mind.
Oh, the change is really, hole two has been cut in half essentially into two different holes. Again, to reduce any cross of the actual walking path, it goes around. Hole four, we just slightly moved the tee pad, so it's not crossing the path again. Hole five is the same. Hole six, it was, this, where the major moves are six and seven really, because there's two, there are three main paths that walk through the Centerwood Park. Six and seven cross them heavily, so we've shifted six to only cross right where the tee pad is, and seven doesn't cross the path at all now, which was our biggest complaint hole, was that cross three or four paths to try to get that out of the way. Hole eight is staying exactly the same. It's actually changing to hole nine, and we added a tenth hole in the course that is in an open area to help with general flow of the way around the park.
Overall, the goal is to take the design and make it something that was shorter, more beginner-friendly, and flowed better with both disc golfers and pedestrians not having to wait on either of the other group. And we've actually, in the new layout, there's, there's ten holes or ten baskets in place to make what would potentially be twenty holes with the two tee pad kind of system, but it's a smaller footprint of the park. So if accepted, we're happy to kind of move this to a more final place and have this project considered finished.
Just to clarify, the numbered rectangles, I'm just putting this in layman's terms, where the person stands.
Correct.
And the circle is what they're aiming for.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for their presentation, etc. The circle represents the basket, and most of the circles are already there. It's just a handful of ones that we'll be moving, and they're represented by the pink circles are where the new placement. The next slide shows ones where we are removing from the current layout.
Thank you. Any feedback from Jimmy Charles, propose or?
Yes, I think the new course layout is beneficial to walkers and players, and makes it safer for everyone.
Thank you. Kate, anything from the council?
Our commissioners did review the proposed changes, and they are in favor of making the changes.
Perfect. So their recommendation is to move forward.
Yes.
Okay. Open it up to the council for any questions.
There are two more slides that have bonus updates to the layout. If you don't mind.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, I apologize. I should have said that. I went through that here, so the council is aware of the statistics that we're receiving from the, the disc golf app on how many visitors were getting to the park uniquely for disc golf. I thought that was a nice add.
That was pretty cool.
And then the comments that we're receiving from them, negative-wise, positive, everyone's happy to ask them in close ocean city to come out and play. Next slide. So the additional piece I want to add in is, I pass the course every day. I drive from Ocean Pines to Wallops every single day, so I see the baskets every time one thirteen. My biggest complaint I've had to him for the last year of doing this is the baskets are starting to get really worn out, especially the yellow bands on the top. They're not that great to look at. We would like to wrap them in navy blue and white, and Eastbound is providing that to make them much more visually appealing to the park and our community in Berlin colors.
Why'd you do blue and white?
Because it's Stephen Decatur. We're black and yellow.
Think about Stephen Decatur. Sorry. I should have commented more on that.
What? Blue, white, and blue.
I'm asking. I'm asking. I didn't know the rowdy ones.
That's a trick question.
He gave us yellow for the town for the last year or two. How long have they been there? Two years now?
Over two and a half.
The yellow shows more wear.
Okay. I'm doing blue.
These will be a final, a final wrap with a clear color on the outside, so it'll stain up the weather a lot better than the current. It's just kind of painted from the metal standardized.
And after that, I think the only other main setup is we're going to explore how we could replace those chains, because some of them are rusted as well, but otherwise they're in good condition, and Eastbound is happy to definitely clean them down for the use of the course.
Thank you.
So back to the color.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think, like, when it's full summer and the trees or when
there's leaves and stuff like that, is blue and white the best option aesthetically and to see?
Yeah. Blue is actually one of the easier colors, because it's so unnatural in most landscapes unless you're looking at water. I could say, looking for a blue frisbee, for example, you can see it pretty far away.
What, what color are in the pond?
That's right, please. So here's an example of the, of the wrap we just did, Ocean Pines on the right, the one on the left is what's currently in Stephen Decatur. So Ocean Pines, the same issue, they would really be a lot of chips. So we had this actually, the test run, worked on Ocean Pines to see how it fit the basket. It ended up being a very easy process. We did orange there because a lot of that's wooded. Their park is the easiest to see in the woods first. Stephen Decatur blue should not be an issue. It's still a pretty open park overall to see the bands.
It's wooded, but not as dense like.
Yeah.
So when you say replacing these chains, I don't want to keep you here, but looking
at this, that whole chain thing comes off?
Yes, ma'am.
So you take all of that off, not just individual ones, make this a tedious process, and every couple weeks come back and replace them, right?
If we were to replace the chains out of Stephen Decatur, we'd have to take all the chains out of the basket. We'd buy a replacement that comes as an entire set instead of a link by.
On your disc golf app, does it have the entire course layout?
Yes, sir. That's how most people get around the course. And that's the second most complained about thing about Stephen Decatur is there's no sign. We have small payovers, but you have to use the app to actually find where to go. Bay Bridge, which is the Ocean Pines course, actually just installed signs through the park. We're getting some decent feedback on that, but this is a definite future thing for Stephen Decatur, because it gets in the way of landscaping and boating and all that piece, so one thing at a time.
Sorry to interrupt you. Does anyone have reported back to you, like, trouble with the app and connectivity when they're using it?
We definitely don't have connectivity issues there, but it's, we talk about usability of getting into disc golf. If you don't casually know to use the app, somebody can't just walk into Stephen Decatur and know where to go and where to throw without a sign, either a total course map sign or signs on each hole.
Sort of makes it a dependency.
Yeah. Most courses around, actually, all of the courses around here have specific tee signs per hole.
And you said the signage may interfere with mowing and things?
Anything that puts me on the ground in the way of mowing, you know, so I try to minimize our footprint with that, with that piece.
That's always been our goal with the Decatur project.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm an outside-of-the-box kind of thinker, you know, outside of the disc bowl, whatever you call this, but looking at this thing, is it possible to put a sign on around the back, not the, the chain basket, but the actual basket itself? Is that a doable thing? That way you're not interfering with other parks, or is that too?
The sign would have to go where they start the holes from.
Oh.
They kind of tell them what the hole is, what you expect kind of the line to take, which the app does for you. But again, most courses have specific signs. I thought I should have jumped into this. This is a down-the-line thing right now.
Got it, got it.
Your new headers for the baskets?
Yes. They'll have numbers on them.
But couldn't you frame course layout fine at WWW, whatever, for a QR code? A QR code, I'm sorry?
Yeah. We've utilized those for, you know, at the beginnings of course, to scan, you know, map. But we can certainly explore ways to do that in each hole. And I was also going to say, what we typically do, and we have WDecatur place signs in the pictures, there's a pre-printed arrow that ties to the bottom of the basket and points the tee pad.
And they have them at Bay Bridge, well, two unfortunate photos for this if you can't see them.
So are golfers expressing that they would rather have signage than have to refer their phone?
It's just from that user experience, showing up to a park you've never been to, you might be here from out of town, and just trying to find your way around. That's, that's usually the biggest challenge of any new course, is having like a kiosk or something to represent where it starts, that, you know, you're sitting in the parking lot, trying to, you're scaling, trying to figure where to go, and then move around.
I mean, you see the baskets, you don't know where to start, but you don't know where the pad is.
Right. So some ways we've seen, they'll have like a, it says a kiosk that just has a, you know, like a two-by-three metal printed course map as a minimal, so you can see that, you know that by hole one, and then you have a good idea of what layout will be. On that map, usually you'll put the QR code to the UDisc to go on and see it.
Let's get this approved, but if you all have some ideas, it's true, you're welcome to see that.
Absolutely.
I just want to appreciate the statistics. I think that's, I think the last time you guys were here, we were talking about usage and trying to find out how many people were coming. It looks like for the last two years, it's between eighty-five and one hundred and ten people a month are using according to the app. Do you think that, it sounds like what we were saying as far as wave varying, that most people are using the app? And so is that accurate? Do you feel like, you know, the nine to ninety-seven, twenty twenty-four, based on the app? Was that total usage, you think? Or do you think there are some people that don't use it?
I don't want you to know the course. So for example, where I live on Bay Bridge, Ocean Pines, I rarely, if I'm just going out casually to play, I almost never use the app because I know my way around, and I don't need to first have to score against myself. But I know some of the folks, looking at, we have pretty in-depth stats from the app itself, and we can see who played it the most, and we know a good, as a majority of them. And I would be surprised if they scored it every time. So I'm sure it's used more than what the app, positively it's used more than what the app actually says.
This, this course being a recreational style layout, and players that, you know, play regularly but don't necessarily compete, they often play with hockey in store. That wouldn't be represented here.
Yeah, you indicated this is used primarily by beginners.
Right.
And that may never know what they have, so their numbers may well be on what you're reporting here.
That's always the hope, sir.
I think usage is impressive. Honestly, I think that's impressive to me.
I like why the lines say people at the top of the curriculum.
I do hope with the layout change, if approved, on top of what we were asked the last meeting to have a sign up to let people know we're going to have a tournament, we've also made signs ready to go that says, the course will be changing. Some people are aware that the course is changing, so we plan to put it by what the tee pad one is now, and then move it to where the new tee pad one would be, so people can just initially, so people can see what that is.
For the interim.
For the interim, yes, sir. And then the hope is, you know, letting the community know through Facebook, on the bad, that hey, there's a new update, if you can play a tournament, come on, try it, and we're going to generate even more focus, especially in the spring season before the tourist season picks up. Otherwise, July and August are definitely the busiest months. I think we see a lot of folks from Ocean City work their way to Berlin, and the kids that come and play disc golf as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for the gentleman with Eastbound Disc Golf? All right. Now we'll open it up to the public regarding motion, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero. Yes, give them.
Mr. Hubbard, is that your name?
Yes.
Earlier, you mentioned the amount of baskets that are being moved. I think you said three, but on the screen, it showed four of the pink dots?
Correct. So there was three moved with an addition of four. We were adding, we were adding a tenth hole to the, the layout for. Is that where you start and end at the same spot?
Okay. I just wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public questions regarding motion, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero? If not, we'll take action by the council motion. So a motion by councilmember Wors?
Thank you.
Second by councilmember Nerr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect the votes you had in this. Thank you all. And wish you luck. Now, when you dig, please coordinate with Jimmy to make sure that we don't hit anything. We just left that being. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for the addition to our park. Really and truly in the beginning, you know, we were, not that we weren't, it wasn't something that we were favorable to, but it was you keeping our eyes on what it could be and to see what it is and it's grown to become. Thank you for that.
To that point, we've learned a lot through this experience of our organization. What else would you want?
Thank you. All right. Thank you. We're going to go back to agenda item three with the Burdell Family Foundation. If you don't mind, representatives from the Burdell Family Foundation, if you can come forward, just introduce yourselves, and then I'm going to apologize publicly on just one introduction.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for joining.
Thank you.
Just names and the entity that you represent for the public record, please.
Yes, my name is Ponce Burdell. I am the co-founder of the Burdell Family Foundation, and my father, James Burdell, is one of the members of our board of directors.
Thank you. So my apologies to both of you and the Burdell Family Foundation. You extended an invitation to us to be able to attend your gala. Unfortunately, well, fortunately for me, I just had had a son that was born, so I was not able to come and attend. And then I think due to some scheduling conflicts with my colleagues up here, we weren't able to send representation to the event. So thank you so much for being here with us, and please accept our apology for not being able to attend.
Hey, we love you, baby, so you do not have to apologize. Congratulations to you both, and it was smart to please be yourself home and keep all the germs away.
Thank you.
So, and we have to, Burdell Foundation, thank you for allowing us this time to come and share with you. We wanted to do two things. We wanted to update you, the council, on some of the things that we've been doing since you were not able to be with us, and because you are a huge part of who we are. So I think you guys remember us from before we've been before you, and we always say the Burdell family, and friends and members, not just actual Burdell family persons. So we've been doing this thing for twenty-two years, and we have grown, and we just wanted to share with you because we cannot do what we do without you. And what started out as a scholarship fund giving away less than two hundred dollars has grown, and in the last two decades, it's grown by a percent bounce. So I just wanted to share that this year alone, we were able to give away, I just, I'm going to look at my phone because I don't want to mess up these numbers, and it's something that we're very proud of. So this year, we were able to do three thousand, four hundred dollars in scholarships. And like I said, two decades ago, we started out with, our first scholarship was a hundred dollars. So glory be, we were able to do that. And in addition to that, we reached six schools in the continent of the United States and two in Ghana, one in Winnebago and one in Amina, Africa. And with that, we were able to do one thousand, five hundred dollars in literacy grants to those students. So through those six schools, we reach over three thousand students, and we give out books to all of them on their birthdays, brand-new books. And we also do books throughout the year. But outside of that, we try to make sure that we're doing more benevolent things in the area. So I know you're probably familiar with the Project Comp that we do that councilmember , Ms. Shanika, her daughter started that through our foundation. But we also do what you guys help us with, and we've been doing it for four years now, is our back-to-school event, where we try to shower the students in the Berlin community and encourage them for their movie night. And that has also grown, and we're able to touch students and give away the book bags. And we thank you for that participation, because that was a vision that we never thought would be able to reach, the students that we do, and the town is growing on it. The older students normally don't stick around for the movie, but they definitely come for the pizza, the popcorn, and their school supplies. So we wanted to share those things with you, to let you know what we're doing and how much your participation and your support of the foundation, and everyone in the community who donates a book or donates a dollar to the students, what it's doing. We wanted to let you see the numbers and know what's taking place, that your faith in us has not gone misused. We are going to continue to work hard and to give it to the community of Berlin. And then the second thing is to just to thank you for what you do, not just for the foundation, but your, your undying support to the community for the learning, the growth, the physical, as we just saw with the golf course, the mental development that you see pouring into the students. So for that, every year, the foundation gives out several awards to people in the community. And this year, we just thought it would be, it would be robbery if we did not recognize you for everything that you've been to us since our inception. So we have this award, I'm going to present it to you, mayor.
Thank you. We'll do a group photo in just a moment.
Okay. And it's just our community service award for everything that you do through the town of Berlin, not just for the foundation, for all of the citizens, starting with those who are young and small. We appreciate you, and the school appreciates you. And lastly, I want you to know that Berlin can claim the crown once again. We do a read-a-thon with all six of our U.S. schools, and some of, we have one in Dunk Carolina, we have a couple across the Bay Bridge in Prince George's County where I reside. Berlin has once again claimed the crown for having the top reader of all three schools. Ms. Emma Haley from Buckingham. So you guys have a lot to be proud of, and it's a big competition across, it's grown across the country. So congratulations to you, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Come on over here. Let's be careful with the cord, sir.
Daddy.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir.
And I think there's another member of your group that's here with you as well. If you want to just introduce yourself to the public record.
Hello, I am Walsh Brudell. I am the vice president of the Brudell Family Foundation.
Mayor Zach Timmons, nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Come on over here, let's be careful with the court, sir. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir.
Come on over here with us. And then, let's, let's all get together.
Thank you so much, yes, sir, thank you.
Sarah, I'll make sure that we all get in the frame. And then, is everybody in?
Tell you anyone. Let me get everyone's. She is. Okay, everyone look at me. And look at me. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, we'll invite you again.
Yes, please, and I'll be there.
December 20th.
And hopefully we'll have some representation here, all of us.
Much older, yes.
Oh, come on now. Well, my wife and I are three days apart, so she always calls me the older as well. I'm going to hand this to Sarah so we can make sure we just weigh that down. Excuse me, sir?
She was 12 years old.
This is agenda item number five, which is the town administrator and departmental report.
I did want to note that most town offices will be closed on Monday for President's Day. And I also want to keep emphasizing this, that there are vacancies on several boards and commissions that need filling. Information is available on the town website about which of those boards and folks who are interested in the format they can submit via the website. You look like you had a question.
Well, I can email us a consolidated list of what.
I can see Sarah maintains that list, I'm sure she'd be happy to.
I can, no problem.
Keep in mind, any planning, and this goes into another comment that I want to make before we move forward. Any planning related board commissioner committee? We have hit the pause button on until Ryan is able to get acclimated. I want her to be able to experience each one of the boards because she does, she will participate in those interview processes as well. So with that, Ryan has started our acting planning director. She started last Monday and she's at the ground running and we're very pleased to welcome her to the town of Berlin. Any questions for Mary or departments that are in attendance or any questions regarding the departmental report?
Yep, the only other thing I would add is I had promised that Jamie would be here to, to, to give a little bit of a report. He described to me some of the technology he used when the Atkins fire occurred and I found it very interesting. Thought everyone else would too, but he found that he had a eye doctor appointment and his eyes would be dilated today.
Well, I may have to reschedule it because of the snowstorm previous.
Right, exactly. So he will be here at the next, whenever the next meeting is that he is in attendance, he'll discuss that.
Question for Jimmy Charles, do you anticipate any interruption in the trash pickup this week?
Tomorrow, I expect trash to be completed normally. We will have to see the accumulation starting tomorrow afternoon into Wayanski. But we'll have every effort to go out there Wayanski and get the trash.
If there is an interruption. We push that out early. Like the second that we make that decision, it's pushed out code red and social media. But really with this storm where it might be a little different, at least most of the subversity is that it might accumulate, but then it should hopefully dissipate pretty quickly as well with the warmer temperatures and then potentially the rain that'll follow. But that's still very much up in the air. So if something changes, we will get that out in public.
We also, we also note that people should go ahead and put their trash to the curb as they normally would. If we don't get it on the normal schedule, just leave it and we will get it as soon as possible.
Yeah, because if we do end up going out, it's way easier to hit everybody when we're going than to have to circle back and try. So just plan as if everything is normal.
But if you're doing that, just be careful because if it does snow and you're putting trash on the curb, please don't run there.
No, what can I take?
Alright, any questions for Mary or regarding any departmental reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the public and any questions or comments from the public. Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the council and we'll start with vice president Barrell.
I just got to say concerning the traffic cameras, I've been getting complaints and both pro and con. And usually, if you talk to the folks long enough, and they conclude that the answer is to slow down. And I think that is a very good thing. The, the traffic cameras, in my opinion, are working tremendously. Because the speed through my neighborhood is, it is slowed down. And I do believe that is a good thing and serves us. When I say us, I'm talking very well in Berlin, very well. So that's all I have.
Thank you, the chief is also preparing a speed camera report for the council that will be in the next subsequent meetings that we're going to have.
That's exciting.
Alright, council member Ner?
Just want to say the new playground at Henry Park is looking really good. I'm sure that'll be online soon and welcome addition to Berlin.
Yeah, still looking tough, well done. Council member Nichols?
Those are two of the areas that I wanted to discuss. I'm loving the fact that it didn't warm up enough to get the playground equipment and things in place. I am super crazy excited because I am a snow girl all day, every day. Can't wait for the next snow. However, sadly enough, sadly enough, according to what I've seen, it'll be gone by Thursday, so. And so I got like a good sign for a while and then go away. I will say be careful and safe out there folks because even though it's coming in and it's leaving out, it's still snow and it's still ice. So please use caution. Thirdly, let's talk about speed cameras. And Mr. Barrell, you say you've been getting complaints, right, vice president Barrell? You know, some.
Well, I said I've been getting both.
Yes, yes. And I will say that I get some, I get some pro. And then I also was, a lot of comments were directed to me. And guess what? Send it, bring it, I have no problems with you sending the con. Because my take on this is, and this works in my house too, because most of the people in my house are drivers now. And I think that they realize that they too are not exempt to speak it.
No, no.
We've learned that. One of my children came home from college and within her first 30 minutes of being home, she had a ticket. And you know what I said? They were all the time. I went to a Christmas party and a friend said, I don't know if I can let you in because I got a speeding, I got a ticket driving down the street. You know what I said? You should have slowed down. It's that simple. I mean, my take on this is, it's, it's, and I say duh and I'm not being rude, but I'm being very serious when I say this. They were put here because people are speeding. You've gotten a ticket because you were speeding. It's not because you're one mile over the speed limit or two miles over the speed limit. You have to be going at least 12.2 miles over the speed limit before you will even be, before the picture will be taken and sent to you in the mail. So if you want to continue.
It's a postcard.
Well, whatever. If you want to continue to send the complaints to me, I will gladly take them and I will state to you until you, until we all, because full disclosure, I am completely transparent. Four of them have come to my house and none of them were for me. Thank the good Lord. One of them was my child and two of them were my, well, anyway. But what I will say is that we are, we're not exempt, we're not exempt either, none of us are. If we're speeding, we get them.
Not yours, town staff.
Exactly, town staff, not exempt.
I've heard.
You've heard on the street.
All of us say they're there. And when Mr. Barrell says that we benefit, we don't benefit financially, we benefit safety wise. We, we, people are slowing down. When you're, when you're driving a little slower, you're a little bit more cautious and that's all we've ever asked for. So the speed cameras are doing their job. Thank you.
And, and the other side is, the mayor's office has received, as well as the chief's department, we've received handwritten notes on utility bills that say, comments about the speed cameras. We've received phone calls and emails into the office. Like vice president Barrell, usually results to the idea that, hey, look, there is a solution. That's lighting off the gas bill. And also that we, we didn't implement these without proactive messaging. I know the chief sat here in a public meeting many times and said, look, these are going to go online, these are going to go online. The department and the town have pushed out ample notifications. Hey, look, these are the amount of violations that we're seeing. Please remember that they are going to go online. Signing, signage was increased. So we've, we've done everything we can possibly do, or we believe we can do, to help raise awareness to the fact that these devices were going to be installed and are there. There's adequate signage to let you know that that is something you're getting ready to encounter.
Last thing on that, it doesn't just, if you speed five times in a day, if you're driving through there, you're going to get five tickets. It's not going to, it's not going to say, ooh. Don't, don't laugh because I know of a few people, not just one, but a few people who have gotten multiples in one day. So if you have, if you have ridden through and you've gotten two or three in one day because you were speeding through more than once, slow down. And it's the truth.
Thank you, council member Horace?
Uh, yes, so just a couple things real very quickly here. I didn't know if I wanted to bring it up here or when, in the town administrator's report, but with the boards and commissions, well, let me step back here. I've been getting some feedback on the proposed parking lot over on West. And it's, you know, not, not anything negative, like both positive. But I'm just, is there like a, I know we have our subcommittee here with the council and the property owner, but is there going to be a committee developed?
The property owner's not part of the subcommittee anymore. They were part of the negotiation, but once the lease has been negotiated, they are no longer part of the conversation. Except for the agreement states that the, any improvements have to be mutually agreed upon. So once we determine what that is going to look like, we will then seek mutual agreement on others.
So is there, I mean, is there going to be a committee for?
There is, still is the same parking subcommittee, council member Green and council member Ner and myself. We actually have a meeting coming up on Thursday. With that, we did have the planning commission, did he, did he accept?
No.
Okay, did he say no or?
No, yes, he said.
Okay, well, we've got, we've received feedback and we thought that there could be positive components of the committee if we added some folks with some ideas about how we can make that beneficial.
You don't want to ask them, another member of the commission.
Only one came forward to us with passion about the project, so that's where we extended it. Right now, we're keeping it somewhat. Simple and easy. We will cast a broader net as we move forward, but we're just in the, in the plan.
Does that include that they from the public?
Not at this time, no.
No, you do the broader net.
We're going to include the chamber of commerce. We're probably, we're not going to make this like some.
Like a town committee?
No, no. This is designed to get the project online, it's not going to be a whole lot of sitting there.
But people should reach out to their council members if they have a specific question or concern and you should pass that along to mayor, to mayor's office and then we can incorporate it in our conversation.
Okay, so then what, I should be, okay, that's, that's where I was kind of going with this.
Consolidated.
Alright, and then my, the other thing, committee related was, part of my 2025 goals that you had asked.
We have those definitely.
That I've asked about. And it came up, yeah, in the summer of 24, when we had our stormwater meeting, both of them actually. There was interest in a stormwater committee with community members. So I would, we don't do it, but I would like to further discuss that.
Yeah, let's talk about that offline.
Okay.
But you are on, and we went through in preparation for Beacon and our six month checkup on the strategic plan. You are running point on, well, no, it's not a committee, but you are kind of running point, same way Steve is running point on parking, on that item. So I don't know if we maybe need a committee so much as like pointing dialogue to you.
Okay, I'd like to talk.
Okay.
So also I wanted to briefly touch on the status of Heron Park negotiation.
I'm not getting too far into it, but go ahead and publicly.
Are they ongoing?
Yeah, I gave you an.
Well, you told me.
I don't have a public update, I don't have a public update.
Okay, and then my last thing is when the, the disc vote were here, it kind of just made me think of something. Can we look at, it doesn't have to be this year or right now, but revamping some of the signage in our parks. I was thinking about specifically the one in Heron Park that's right there on the right when you walk in, which might not be after a while, but if that one could be redesigned and moved back.
I would say at this point, we're probably not going to look at Heron Park in particular because it's going to be under so much construction.
Oh, okay.
Well, also public works.
They also, I was thinking something if we could look into for Stephen Decatur. When you're, when you walk in there from the parking lot, if there was something like on the right or the left, just kind of like, like a post with signs that say, you know, racket ball and, and.
Like waves on it.
Hopefully sooner rather than later, we will have a permanent restroom there that we can put signs on.
And some information as well. And plus Jimmy wants to update some of his signs in the parks. But what I recommended was waiting until the end of the fiscal year or closer to the end so that we know like what that available funding looks like.
It's a really great line, so just think of it here. Alright, that's all I had.
But if you know a particular sign that you see, make sure you point that to Jimmy. We got some that are rather outdated and difficult to read.
Well, I mean, yeah, the one in Heron Park, I mean, it's, it talks, it has all the rules of the code and, and no one, I mean, let's be honest, that no one's going to sit there and read all that. But it's important that people know especially about leashing dogs and animals. But, but yeah, so those are, those are my three things to.
Thank you. Council member Green?
Yeah, just funny about the speed cameras because I happen to know a family of four, something to the Decatur sporting event and they had 10 in a week. But you know what? And if they weren't very pleased, but they looked at it as a money grab by town of Berlin. But then explain to them a little bit about the background, of course, and the fact that kind of confirms that there's a speeding problem in the area, a family of four is getting 10. But also, when in the report that maybe we get, if we could just recap the percentage that the town of Berlin gets, I believe it was 18 of the 40, and it has to be spent on police department. And I think those are things that, that's why I'm telling people, you know.
That is, those are, I can't speak to the split, but.
60/40.
60/40. And, but we are channeling that money directly back into law enforcement.
Yeah.
The other thing people have to remember is this particular revenue source, we hope goes away after a while.
Right, exactly, it's the only one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, I haven't quite, I haven't talked about that, but I believe I just got being dented yesterday. I picked up my son at camp and so I'm waiting for that, but I'd rather come in the mail. So anyway, it happens. My waves, as you just, your speed has been captured.
It'll tell you that your speed's been captured?
But it also gives you a warning in advance, so.
Yeah.
You want to know something cool about waves? You can change it to Paddington. I found that out the other day. You can add Paddington as your narrated voice. And Steve, don't take, don't take offense to this, but if you do change it to Paddington, he talks about his engagements with law enforcement. So it's kind of cute, but I had to explain that to a five real quick.
It's adorable.
But, so yeah, I definitely appreciate the strategic plan being linked to the agenda. Very much appreciate that, we'll talk about that.
We went, we tried, Stephen was running point on that, but now that Laura's up and running in her, in her role, we will be doing that.
I think it's helpful and I think that, you know, it does keep us on point, keeps us accountable. And then congratulations to Lieutenant Fisher on 30 years of service. It's very impressive, so please pass it along. And then, you know, I was away last week, I came home on a, late on a Tuesday night, it happened to be the night of the Atkins fire. And, you know, that's one, you think, really think back, there's, I can't really remember the last commercial fire of that nature in the town of Berlin. And, you know, it's literally right next door to my house, but I know with BFC, we are, you know, we always are wrapped up in the funding and, you know, there's sorts of dynamics in the formula, but, you know, it struck me because it was right there and I went out and saw some of it. You know, these are folks that run towards danger, you know. My house was able to not have to do that, you know, anyway at all. So I think it's just a, you know, appreciation to them. And then the next day, they had another fire, of course, which was outside of the town of Berlin. But, you know, I just, we certainly appreciate that service, you know, that wind was blown in a different direction. You know, not that I think, you know, my home was in danger or anything like that. We definitely could have smoked out for sure, you know, the smoke was going, I guess, north east, yeah, right? So, yeah, no, that's it. You know, it was some, it's beautiful, we were on the scene, we saw how many people came and responded, volunteers, of course, aid as well, but crews from all around the area, so, you know, you see it every day still, the lasting effect of it. Now, it's sad, you know, it's sad to see the Atkins, not for sure, like that go up and, you know, the state of uncertainty that they have now as far as what we can do moving forward, but yeah, that was really it.
So I don't want to steal Jamie's thunder, but I will say that he looked at the totals and it looked like they flowed about 100,000 gallons on that fire.
And that seems like they're going to be.
And the other interesting part was, Chief Grunden actually texted me to say that, hey, look, there is a big fire in Berlin, it's snow. I slept through it because I had just, I had just put Benjamin down and then I was dropped out. But thankfully, Jamie received the notification because of his volunteerism with another department. And he was able to, within a short amount of time, be able to fire up the wells or the pumps to be able to boost the pressure. The departments ended up using three hydrants that were very close to one another. So boosting that pressure was essential to them being able to do their operations. The other side of that is following the fire, I spoke with Chief Grunden. We are going to set up a, kind of like an emergency text for his line officers as well as our integral departments like police, electric, public works, water, and Mary and myself to kind of, in that instance, if, if they hear the call, they can ping that text and it should go to everybody. So we're trying to implement some of those best practices moving forward. So we're learning a little bit from it as well.
Yeah, that's right. Forgot really one of the points that I wanted to make, you know, I'd heard after the fact from a church member that their grandson was actually on the second floor and saw the roof collapse, you know. So, you know, think about where it could have possibly been, you know, that would have been, you know, potentially tragic. For nobody to be injured in that sort of fire, it was, you know, I feel like we should have been blessed, it could have been worse.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to comments from the mayor's office. I'll start with Sarah and then I've got a couple things I want to add.
I had prepared a memo for everybody about the frozen funding for our Rinkent and Communities and Neighborhoods grant, which is now unfrozen.
Thought out.
Thought out. So I just want to take the opportunity to say that I'm monitoring it very closely. I'm in constant contact with our federal highway and state highway partners on the grant. We had $250,000. partners on the grant. We had $250,000. That is phase one of the 1.2 million, both expended or obligated. So, I'm hopeful and we continue, continue to remain hopeful that we'll be able to move the project forward through phase one because that funding has already been obligated. And as I learn more about it, I will keep you all informed.
So, with that, we usually, I definitely try to stay out of the national politics, especially up here. But if you look at the stuff that's going on and Sarah's memo, you can see that we're not immune from some of the stuff that is taking place in the news. With that, we are really
I didn't make any copies. I still, I did it, I touched it because I felt like it was not
It's not applicable anymore. But, but the important takeaway is that Rowland was kind of unique in this sense because there are other partners and municipalities in the state that have received this type of award and grant funding. However, they were not as far along as what the Town of Rowland is. We were able to get our grant document signed and secured before the inauguration, so we were able to secure that funding. And then through some of the actions that had taken place subsequently, we were on a call where we received basically a stop work. Hey, you don't really have the funding to move forward. The grant's in jeopardy. We don't know where it's going to go.
Well, I would say you can move forward, but there's no guarantee.
You won't be reimbursed.
Correct. So, thankfully, that had changed and we are now capable of shredding the memo and moving forward as we think.
I'm probably not going to shred it. I'm just going to hold it for
Something to keep for memory.
So, are there other instances where that federal action may affect us in that manner?
Uh, we have a, what is it, $400,000 and some change earmark that had made it through very, very far in the process, but we're at a critical point in March where that could get pulled. And that is for the community center. So, why we're funding for our town that we're not immune from some of the stuff you see in the news.
And I've looked at Natalie and information maybe about lead lines, but I don't know about that particularly. I didn't work on
I haven't gotten a sense that that was in jeopardy at the moment.
Yeah, some of our local level stuff that we're doing, we'll keep you up to date, but some of our local level stuff, we are monitoring very, very closely if it has a time federal coming. So, all right, anything else, Sarah?
Um, you
We will in a moment.
You got it.
Yes. So, let's tackle the letter that we are going to send for our FY 26.
Someone, there were two letters. One is two pages, one is one.
Yes, so one sided.
No, but I have two. Somebody may be missing their single page. One is two-page double-sided.
I maybe had passed, Sarah might have made one for me.
Okay.
And I might have passed because I had the original.
There are two different ones.
The, the one that is a single-page letter where you can see the heading and the footer on the same page. And it starts with, "On behalf of the mayor, council, citizens, and business community within the Town of Rowland." This is our FY 2026 grant request letter in draft format to the commissioners. Last year, the, the date was in the second paragraph where it says fiscal year. It was 2025. We asked for the same increase. We did receive that. This year, with the property assessments changing the way that they are again, we are going to continue to ask for that same increase for FY 2026, which would bring our request to $537,500. This is what's called an unrestricted grant and it's designed to offset the cost of services that the Town of Rowland provides in lieu of what Worcester County provides in services. So, basically, unrestricted grant of $537,500. The additional request, we usually like to try and make one additional ask each year of the commissioners. This year, the internal staff group, when we reviewed this, decided that maybe our best course of requests for moving forward is going to be a $150,000 ask to assist with the community center, but focused on site work. So, a lot of the funding that we have currently, whether it's the congressional earmark or the CBGG funding, is focused on the early design and engineering and stuff that we want to do. It's very preliminary and the feasibility study. This is designed to help keep us moving ahead with site work that's going to need to be done on the property. And that kind of puts it all in a nutshell with the $687,500 ask.
So, we're not asking for any, for, for years that we were asking for rails and trails?
We still have that funding. It is linked to the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Grant with a May timeline, and we received permission from the commissioners to continue to seek that grant funding using that match. So, we intend to try and leverage that this year. It's in the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Grant. However, with the documentation, we had to move that to a phase three rather than a phase one. And we're trying to seek permission from the federal highway administration to pursue kind of both paths at the same time. So, Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods with the public outreach side and the rails and trails, Burnham Bike Way Project. So, we're still moving forward with that, but if we can't secure it in May, we're going to have to give that money back.
What about asking, to reconsider the $25,000 that we asked for the West Street project?
Um, West Street project, refresh my memory. I don't think we asked them for that.
Yeah, we did. Are you sure that Project Open Space?
Oh, oh, yes. We are going, we are still table topping a date to try and get the commissioners, but we'd like to try and get this across the finish line first.
Just to put it out there?
I don't think that it would be wise to join those two together.
It's separate.
Well, I know they're separate, but
Yeah, but I would not join them together in the same letter. That would be my recommendation to the group. We are still pursuing that and trying to get a meeting together with them, but I think they should be pursued separately. That's my
Just because of the temperature.
Oh, we're not letting it go. Trust me. We're not letting it go again.
It's going to work in different angle.
Trying to do it, yeah, one at a time.
Well, I think the seven and a half percent increase is definitely appropriate.
I think so.
You know, whether or not get that level, you know. But I think there's a, I'm not trying to find the exact number. They have a transmission in public tax revenue coming in, which I'm assuming Towne Rowland will get it, but will as well see an increase. But I think it's the time is right for that increase. And so, I just want to support that increase for sure.
I'd like that we're just, I mean, if, looking at it linearly, literally?
Linear.
Linear. Anyway, looking at it like a line. Like last year, I can't remember exactly, we asked for the unrestricted and maybe two or three other things. This year, we are doing the unrestricted and one thing.
And last year, what we asked for was, just so that everybody knows, we asked for some assistance with marketing. We are still trying to work that angle, once again, just a little differently. We are, we also asked for assistance with the work that we completed on Seahawk Road due to the fact that there was an increased cost predominantly associated with Worcester County Public Schools and the striking that they have there. So, we felt that both of those were pretty fair asks, but definitely the Seahawk Road ask. We didn't get that, but we did get the seven and a half percent increase. So, we're hopeful that we'll at least get that incremental increase to keep pace with, as Steve mentioned, the assessments that are coming in higher. But we also think that the community center is a solid point where we can all reach consensus on, and Commissioner Diana Fornell has been integral in that committee as well.
Steve, what's the average assessment increase?
So, they're, I believe that they're expecting 18 million in new revenue.
Percentage wise?
I don't know. I kind of turned it on the number, but
It's higher than seven and a half.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Definitely.
So, one, ask for 10.
I think that seven and a half is reasonable. We got it last year. Let's not be greedy.
And they did, even with
I mean, let's not be greedy.
Even with the assessment increase.
Well, we sat flat for many years. So, this is our second consecutive year in a very long time asking for an increase.
See, I think, I do think seven and a half percent is probably the right number because they actually cap their departments at 4%. Despite that, they've increased. They told their departments not to come in higher than 4% above current. So.
I think seven and a half is fair, especially with 150.
That's very good.
Could we get that maybe?
I'd be afraid, I'd be afraid to go that high.
I would too.
Only because
Is this weekly?
Historically.
We squeak enough that they pay attention. Trust me.
Highly functioning wheel.
Yeah. We do squeak quite a bit. All right. Any, can I get a consensus?
I'll make a motion. Do you want to send this letter to the county commissioners for the FY 26 fiscal year?
Thank you. We got a motion by Councilmember Morris, the second by Vice President Burrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Votes unanimous. Also, pay attention to the Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. Set your calendars. If you can attend, we would appreciate your assistance. All right. Up next is the, still with the mayor's comments, Consolidated Transportation Plan Request. The letter is basically unchanged. We did provide an update to the pedestrian bridge portion because it does, although it says pedestrian bridge, keep in mind, the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods is focused on a holistic view and also focused on kind of gathering community feedback to find a solution. But where it's the same that we've passed along in the state for many years, we wanted to keep it consistent. With that, the other item that we are probably going to put in here, just because it's consistent with the Berlin or the Worcester County Greenways and Trails Master Plan, is some language that talks about our existing right-of-way agreement with the Maryland Delaware Railroad. More informational than anything else, but we can link this to our grant applications that we make for the Bike Way Project. And there's, in the Bike Ways Master Plan, and then I'll go to Sarah, it does show that connection point across the railroad easement all the way to Snow Hill and up to what would then be the new Route 90 if it's built, or when it's built, I should say. So, that is incorporated in there, so we just want to keep it consistent.
I just wanted to make sure to highlight the connection between Berlin and Snow Hill that we would be asking the county to take the lead on the MOU because so much of the land is county-owned.
I have a question. I was under the impression, perhaps I was mistaken, that the traffic signal on North Main and Route 50 was scheduled by State Highway 4F, 27 or 29.
You are not incorrect in the fact that it is moving forward. It is just not being really driven by the Town of Berlin. We are a partner in that dialogue, but the state and the District 1 office is running point on that. So, I didn't want to put an update in here because it's really their update, not ours. We just continue to put it up as a, as a primary concern. And it'll stay that way until it's completed. Like, we used to have the same thing for Route 113 and 818, so down here by Rhodey Joe's, but then we pulled that after it was complete.
Yep.
And this document is also shared with the M.D. District 1 office during our elected officials meetings and stuff like that. So, it's kept in the forefront. One area that we keep harping on with them is the addition of the crosswalks because we have a lot of pad sites, especially downtown, but not marked crosswalks. So, we are still trying to work with them to add those.
Is, okay. Is this, is this branch here?
It is. It's one of
In front of the road tracks there?
Yeah, what is Broad?
That's 340.
Jimmy, do you know the number of Broad Street? What is it, Route what?
274.
274.
274.
Okay.
So, last
It's on there.
All right.
We did, we tagged every state highway that we have in town.
Well, even with what we did, make a motion to include this.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Please explain to me again why you, why you reference the pedestrian bridge again?
We've kept it, this is the third year with that reference. So, we're keeping it consistent unless or when it does change via the community feedback, then we'll change it. It's also referenced, there was a pedestrian bridge reference in the Greenways and Trails Master Plan, so it's consistent with the county's documents as well. And they had it actually at Rhodey Joe's, and we suggested that may not be the best location, that it should be moved somewhat more in the dense areas. So, we're just, it was a consultant that generated it, so we're just, we're trying to keep it consistent, but we're also trying to keep this.
Well, there's no other comment. I'm going to make a motion that the mayor sent this to the commissioners as well.
So, a motion by Councilmember Morris regarding the CCP letter.
Sorry.
Second by Council, by Councilmember Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect. Votes unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
I was about to say, I mean, I know why they're wearing sneakers and whatever.
Yes, good.
Jimmy, the new flagpoles at Stephen Decatur Park, what's the status of that?
We are waiting on, we're working on how to bring in electric to the site because we want to include, when we put the flagpoles in, we want to have lights and already the electric run to do it as one whole project. So, we're, we're still working with the contractor and then the lights were just ordered. I think they just came in like a week or two ago. So, Tim and I need to get together and continue that process.
And also the sidewalk extension where it ends abruptly, you would say you have some kind of plan to address that?
I thought, Stephen.
Stephen, we're going to do it tripally and then it ends just past the
I was still kind of waiting to see where we fill in with
The bathroom.
The bathroom, that it would actually circle the way around to that point. But we're also looking at possibly just making it a, like a stone dust path just right now.
Just something to plant a wall here, you know.
Yeah.
That would be helpful. Because everybody's pushing baby strollers down there.
It's an altering move.
Exactly.
So, then just to follow up on that, our, the new flagpoles, are the War?
So, we have War Memorial, William's Own, and Stephen Decatur Park.
Are they, they're not there at War Memorial yet, are they?
No.
Not all of them, but that's it.
We have them stored at the electric plant.
A question for
That might be a good time.
Okay, man, I got one more thing I want to finish on my comments.
Just to follow up to, when you said Jamie was, was, was able to increase the water pressure because of the fire, did he have to come on site?
Nope, he was able to do it remotely.
He did.
He did come on site, but he
Because he was responding with his fire company, but he was able to do it all on his stuff.
Yeah, but he also, he had to troubleshoot a little bit within those three hydrants as well. Not that we had an issue with hydrants, but there was an issue with the draw in that close period. But I think that's better for Jamie to answer, but, yeah, he was able to do most of that remotely. So, which is also why having that group text, because there's some stuff Tim can do remotely, some stuff Jimmy can do now with his sign. But
Is it here?
It is here.
It is here. That's right. That was in the second.
All right. My last comment regarding the mayor's office is, a lot of people receive their assessments. A lot of people have reached out about their assessments. Keep in mind, that is done through the state, but through a county office. If you have a question about that, please write your questions to Worcester County Assessments. And then also with the taxes, property assessments going up, it's not a bad thing to check at the bottom to make sure your homestead tax credit is on there if it's your primary residence. If not, it is something you should apply for because it does save you some money.
And there isn't a fuel price since 14.
I've never had luck with that, but yes, there is.
I'll, I'll tell you mine right now.
Okay, well, maybe I'll, I'll do it with
Let you know.
Hey, I'll do it with you. We'll see where it goes.
Mine's like 67%.
Mine's going crazy. Going crazy. All right. So, then comments from press? Anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Vice President Burrell, two and two. All in favor?
Aye.
There we are. Only one, only motion doesn't require a second. Because if you say no, you're staying here by yourself.